I'm gonna ask the part of health, grant contributors, if they'll come forward and we're gonna recognize them. You're the main speaker?
Yeah.
This group here along with a large number of the work of that harsh recreation that helped Matt. And Matt has been doing this for a long time, so even though this is the third time before we got the award. But John Bonner helped us in the writing, we had to update the masterclass. He was gonna get somebody outside to do it, and they wanted $60,000 for those guys along the ship. Don't take it to plan and they were lucky. But we're just in food, and I just can't say it enough. You know, we had a meeting here with all the players, and Jennifer was here, and Skip, oh, Chip. And we got a lot, and they gave us some information that we really have not helped us before that. That really helped us in being able to meet. You know, this grant is, it's not fair, it's an equal match. So you have to have a lot of money if you get $356,860. We have to have a backlog there, and money that we raise in order to use large grants. So we're just in food, but as I've said to Val a few times, since she and I rode back in the hot sun that day, and put the windows down, it's always been so happy. That this is just the beginning. The hard work is ahead of us, but we've got three years to do it, but we sure don't wanna take three days to do it. And we've got a lot of kids around that really need this program, this work. And I got a little thank you petition that I'm gonna give each one of them, so that they'll have a memory of what happened. For Matt, Jennifer, I mean, she's our hero, really, and truly she's our hero, because when the meeting was going on, when they were gonna announce at the lunch, we were getting the awards, there was a question about, is this gonna use this money to turn down buildings? And she took care of that in short order, and didn't leave a question on anybody's mind. Skip, and John Bonner, thank you so much. Thank you for coming to the board today. Let's get out of the way. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Now we'll get into public comments. Individuals wishing to address the board are asked to provide their name and address when they come forward, and each one has three minutes to talk. So do we have anyone that would like to come and address the board tonight?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Loretta Borg, and I live at 427 Greenleaf Road. I live in Johnston County. I've got a bits and phone number and address, but at a McGee's crossroads, we call it West Benson out there. But anyway, I just wanted to take a few minutes and give you a few updates. First of all, the concert for Thursday night with the Coastline Band has been rescheduled for November 1st because of the impending weather. The second thing is that meal day preparations are coming along fine. All of the entertainment was able to make the rescheduled date. The carnival will be here. We've had some vendors to cancel, but we're working hard to fill most of the spots with new vendors. The campers have canceled, but we're also looking at campers. We're doing lots of radio and social media advertising to let everyone know about the plans and the rescheduled dates. We did refund full in money to the vendors and the campers who could not attend the rescheduled date. We felt that was only the fair thing to do. We'll have rodeos on Friday and Saturday nights, and then on Sunday, there'll be a barrel race instead of a full rodeo. That was a schedule change. And we've added something fun. Since Halloween is near, our new date, we're gonna have a horse and mule Halloween contest in the parade. So we're encouraging those people to dress their animals in costumes. All security is in place, and the town staff is working on last-minute details. The parade's gonna be a great one, because we're gonna have several shrine units with us that couldn't attend the last September date. So all in all, things are great. We've had quite redoing it almost in some ways, but we're making it through. Do you have any questions? All right.
Anybody have a question?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, bud.
Good evening. My name is Vivian Santos. I came here from, well, I'm working for the Small Business Administration Office for Testing Systems, and I came here from Atlanta, Georgia. What I'm trying to do here is to let everybody know that the Small Business Administration is providing assistance, systems to businesses, homeowners, renters, and nonprofits. Okay, do you want me to say my name again?
You have business, you have business security?
Okay, okay. I'm working for the Small Business Administration. It's a federal agency that is providing assistance, sister assistance to all resident businesses and nonprofit organizations that suffer damages from the hurricanes. So our program consists of loans, low-interest loans and long-term loans. And we are encouraging businesses, homeowners, renters, and nonprofits to apply. First, apply with FEMA to get a registration number, and then if they get referred to us, they can apply with us. They can use our website, is SBA at, SBA dot gov. We have our 800 number, which is 800-659-2955. Or if they want to, they can visit our office. It is located in Smithfield. The address is 101 East, East Market Street. And that would be the Riverwalk Office, too. Our office is the number two there. Another thing is, I will be here conducting outreach activities, going to churches, maybe senior centers, just to let everybody know that we are here providing assistance. If you have any questions, you just can let me know.
Vivian, if you would, leave us a pack of cards back on the table, so that if anyone has questions, they can call you.
Okay.
Because I'm sure they didn't hear the phone number.
Okay, I'm visiting stakeholders. I will leave the flyers in English and Spanish. I don't know if we have Spanish-speaking residents here, but everybody has this opportunity. And the deadline for applying for physical damages, it is November 13th. So they have to hurry up if they want some kind of assistance.
November 13th?
Yes, and for, I forgot to tell you that businesses, they can apply for economic injury loans. We know that I-95 and I-4 were closed, and that caused economic injuries to businesses. So they can do that if they think they need it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Yeah.
How many people have applied so far in our area?
In your area, not that many, but I can give you the number a little bit later.
I just, I just hit you with the, on the loans, what is the interest rate, the average interest rate?
Yes, it's as low as 2% for homeowners and renters. For businesses, it's a little bit higher. It will be 3.675%, as lower.
Right.
Depending, and the credit for us is acceptable for SBA, doesn't have to be a star. So we're gonna try to help everybody.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, and have a good day.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Michael Blitzen, 653 Federal Road. Some of y'all are aware, during the storm, the DOT decided to close the 40 exit ramp on the westbound side. Needless to say, I thought that was a very bad idea. During my calls around the mayor, the town manager, and the public works director, and some of the councilmen were very gracious with their time in hearing my concerns, and I do appreciate that. I understand that the town doesn't control what DOT does, or doesn't have a direct, you know, decision in what goes on. I have learned, however, during the course of this, that they do have some input. And I also understand that the traffic, both in the storms and in just regular accidents, and the 95 and the 40 detours and all that, is a very complex, you know, situation, and there probably is no easy answer. I do feel like maybe that there's not been as much planning and thought put into alternate traffic patterns, both for the hurricanes and just for wrecks, and maybe as much planning as needs to be done. And maybe the town could facilitate something with DOT in coming up with a really viable plan. But closing the exit is not at all a viable plan. I can give you the 104 reasons why, but I'll spare you that. But thank y'all for considering that.
Thanks a lot. Michael.
I wanna say that Michael, I wouldn't say of himself, but he has helped a lot of people that have been stranded and had trouble through these times, these storms we've had and things like that. And we, I'm not sure we have influence, but if we do have influence, we need to help him as much as we can.
I agree, absolutely. Anybody else? Is there any question about the written reports? Anybody want comments from? Okay, Matt.
Great, thank you, Mayor. We'll take an opportunity, for the fact that we have quite a few folks with us today that may be new faces, to update you on the status of our grant projects. And a dominant portion of the projects that we're gonna discuss today still stem from Matthew in 2016. But we are now nearly complete on our large project number one, which was our $80,000 backdoor check valve project. I'd like to thank Tim Robbins, he headed that up, and the 30-plus check valves were in place, and they know that they were, because they worked during Hurricane Florence. We've come back through, we're finalizing our top grade finishes, which are asphalt, concrete repairs, and pulling forms, and going back and just doing the final punch list items. So if any business owner on that 301 corridor has any issues, please have them contact you to my office or Tim Robbins, and we'll make sure he or she has any addition, any issues that they have with those final repairs taken care of. Also, I'd like to tell you that the state came in and did our inspection on that for the grant, and I think it went fairly well. Again, Tim had all his ducks in a row on our documentation. Any questions on that burden project? I've received an update on item number two, which is our AIA study with Wooten Company. They helped us receive a grant of $150,000 that we coupled $22,500 of local funds to do $172,500 project. That project is nearly complete. We did have a few dollars left where we had savings, and what we did with those savings was legitimately reinvested that into additional camera work, inspection, and cleaning of our sanitary sewer line. So we have quite a few feet. We were in excess of our 10% for the year for the state, and that's helped us defray a lot of staff, labor, and time into that area. So we're very appreciative of that. What we're looking for is the Wooten Company to come back with a draft report. Staff will be reviewing that draft report, we anticipate, in the next 30 days, hopefully between today and the next meeting. If we can complete that, you may have a report brought to you on the status of the repairs and what's needed as early as November, but definitely by the December meeting is what our goal is. Any questions on where we are with the inspections and sanitary? Once we have that report back, then we'll know how we need to spend our $875,000 grant that we were fortunate enough to receive an NC-16 fund. So the NC-16 funds are specifically designated for our sanitary sewer system, which we all know took a substantial amount of infiltration and inflow water, which conveniently referred to as INI. That INI forced sanitary sewer to come out of the ground, and we saw it again during Hurricane Florence, and unfortunately, it came out on Highway US 301. So we're working on how we're gonna clean up the system, which means basically coming through and finding pinch points, if there's problems where water can come in and obviously get out, and try to tighten that system up. It'll include a substantial amount of manhole rehabilitation. We had originally intended that a significant portion of this money may be used on Main Street, but we'll get to the update on the Main Street repairs in the latter portion of the meeting. But we do have pinch point problems throughout the system that our cameras have helped identify, and we'll bring you a report on that, like we said again, in November, December, as part of the AIA study. So any questions about where we're headed with items one, two, or three? Item four is a very large one. As you know, we took three to four, sometimes five foot of water, depending on the point, within the wastewater treatment plant during Matthew, and we received nearly $1 million in FEMA repairs and support. We are tracking every single expenditure, every single vendor, the bid process, and I'd like to thank Kim Pickett for spearheading that. She's tracking every single penny coming and going, and we've worked diligently to make sure we dotted all of our i's and crossed all our t's with the state. It's extremely complex, and there's a lot of moving parts, and the entire team at the wastewater treatment plant's being called upon to participate in that, from the superintendent all the way down to the frontline labor team. We have a problem at the plant that we're trying to rectify, it's a very complex one, the removal of vegetation on the lagoon. The mayor's been there, I think other commissioners have been there, you've seen that. It's a very large undertaking. We've thrown a lot at that as far as equipment and labor, and we're still working to get that corrected. We're in the process of putting up the new fence. We've also paved the road coming in. We've repaired generators, we've repaired lab equipment, we're repairing rotors and ditches. There's valves that need to be repaired. Out of Hurricane Matthew, that was our number-one point of failure and the number-one place of danger. So we're trying very hard to bring the plant back up to pre-disaster condition, and as you know, we're getting dangerously close to the two-year anniversary of the storm. So it's been a lot of work, but we're moving forward. So any questions about the plant? I know that's been a point of contention since we had an issue in June.
Oh, the question I have is, are we making plans to take these porta-johns and screen the refuse that comes from those?
Yes, sir. And what the mayor's indicating is our septic hauler is bringing material, and that material can be almost anything in that truck. And what he's indicating is are we looking to put a bar screen system in that will help us separate solids and liquids and keep materials out from the plant operation, which is causing a lot of issues? And to answer your question, yes, the mayor's been down on two occasions with me to meet with the team, and they have a deadline to report back on that with an option for solutions and cost estimates in the next 30 days.
Is that additional expense, or is it a better use of that facility, or is it done for members?
To answer your question, Commissioner, we will have to review absolutely the costs that we're charging, because we're very inexpensive, and to pardon my expression, there is no really good expression for that wastewater plant. The juice isn't worth the squeeze in that situation, where you're taking in about $40,000, $50,000 a year in revenue, but it's costing potentially more than that in maintenance and repairs. So we have to find that balance point, that either we can pre-screen the material, so it doesn't cost us as much, or put a little bit of labor, like other plants do, they do on the truck driver, the company that delivers. So they either dump it and clean and screen. We're not to that point yet, but I think that may have an impact on rates if we look at rates. It's very, very inexpensive for the porta-john companies right now.
I don't think there's any question, if we get the egg beaters back in and keep that stirred up, we're not gonna have vegetation growing in there, so.
It'll definitely.
That's really important.
Yes, sir. Going to the next page, page two on your agenda, the Golden Leaf application for stormwater repair. We are moving forward. We have designs, easements, and agreements, I believe, all in place now for the hood lot, and we should be able to stay in the roadway for the hood repair. Unfortunately, we've had to push off our contractor on that due to the September to October delay of meal day. We were set to begin this week. Now we're set to begin in November on the hood repair. And we honestly couldn't get in the road and start digging in anticipation that, God forbid, something like Hurricane Michael comes through, and you're hindered. And so we're gonna hold off on the hood lot repair, which is basically a parish drive repair till after the rerun of the 69th annual meal day. The NAPA, the former NAPA building now Mr. Blackman owns, hopefully all goes well. We're working to secure those easements, and we'd like to work with him to find a repair that will be substantial on his property at no cost to him, and we'll look to do that one. We also have to communicate to DOT, what the hydraulic analysis showed is, the size of the pipes on the property can be improved, but there's a limitation there, and it becomes a culvert issue on US 301. So we're gonna work with DOT to talk about a culvert improvement at 301 for the former NAPA building. The Vostic property is complete, that one is done. We're working on the final paperwork, and we have a reporting process that's due to Golden Leaf, so Ms. Pickett, myself, and Tim Robbins are working on the reporting process back to Golden Leaf on the stormwater repair. The Golden Leaf grant for the building, where we are with Public Works, we've expended north of $150,000. That entire 100-by-200-foot structure now has a brand-new roof on it. We figured that was our first step. We've done a majority of the cleanup around the building. We're now in the process of trying to secure an architectural engineer to give a stamped drawing to move forward. We had substantial conversations with Mr. Larry Mattingill, but unfortunately, as we all know, he's quite busy right now post-storm, and there's some other issues, unfortunately. He's not able to assist us, we wanted to keep it as local as possible. We're looking for alternate architectural engineers that can help us in that project at a minimal cost. We knew it would be quite feasible using Mr. Mattingill, but we may be getting in a situation where an architect wants to charge 10% of the whole project, which is $50,000 we can't account for. So we're working on getting stamped drawings, so that we can move forward in the process. Then it becomes, who inspects your work? You don't really want to be inspecting your own work, and not that you can, but you just don't want to have that appearance. So we're working with the county. On this particular project, Mr. Parenti is checking in with the county to make sure that once we start to pull our own permits, that we can have a second set of eyes inspecting our work as we GC our own project. So that's where we are with the repair of the Public Works building. We were hoping to move forward in the fourth quarter. It looks like our completion date will be pushed out into the first quarter of 2019, but this is a major improvement for us. This will help us with central dispatch, for Public Works, for Electric, and even part of our wastewater team, as now we'll be able to have our items under roof. So we're taking it slow to go fast. Are there any questions about the status of the building?
I'm sure Tim says it sooner the better.
Thank you.
Good.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we're gonna get into the public hearing part, and I, SD 2018-03. I asked Andy Thomas to come forward and describe this to us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Board. I am Andy Thomas. I am currently serving as your interim planning director, and pleased to be working with the fine staff that you have here. Tonight is a preliminary plat from Monroe Fields. You have a depiction of the preliminary plat on the screen in front of you. The owner is Gray Wolf Development. The location is Benson Hardy Road, approximately 1 and 1/4 miles west of NC 50 North. The current zoning is R-20. It has 36.21 acres. The applicant is Gray Wolf Development. Utilities are Johnston County and Duke Energy. The surrounding zoning and uses, property is bound by properties primarily zoned RA, residential agriculture. Property uses in the median area are single-family residential. Under comments, a traffic impact analysis is not required per the Benson UDO. Improvement to the property shall be in accordance with all state, local, and federal regulations. Herb and gutter along with sidewalk are not required, as development will not be connecting to town water or sewer utilities. Development will be served by Johnston County public water and private septic systems. The staff recommendations, the staff recommends approval with the following provisions. One, that the preliminary plat approval is contingent on technical review of construction drawings. Number two, add a type A buffer along Benson Hardy Road of lots 1 and 28 through 33. Number three, add a type A buffer at the mail kiosk along Monroe Field Drive. Four, street yard canopy crews shall be installed in accordance with the Benson UDO. Five, development signage shall be located and permitted in accordance with the Benson UDO. Number six, the pavement width and fire height and some cul-de-sacs sizes will be in accordance with the NC Fire Prevention Code, local fire authority, which is the Benson Fire Department, and NC DOT if the streets are dedicated. Number seven, there'll be no direct access of any lot from Benson Hardy Road. Plan board met on this item last week, and they recommended approval with the following provisions. Number one, a type A buffer shall be constructed along the southern property line of Lot 12, which is the big lot to the bottom right. A swell shall be constructed along the southern property lines of lots 28, 27, 18, and 17 to divert stormwater to the existing pond. Both of these conditions came about as a result of requests from the neighbors and applicant agree to those conditions. I would remind you now that this is a part of a hearing where you enter into a quasi-judicial hearing, and that you will be acting like the court. Testimony you take will be sworn. You should act on any facts that are entered into the record. Along with that, you should make the following findings a fact. That application will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plans as submitted and approved. Two, the application meets all specifications and conforms to the standards and practices of sound land use planning and Town Code ordinances or other applicable regulations. Number three, that the application will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood areas. Number four, the application will not adversely affect the adopted plans and policies of the town or violate the character of existing standards for the development of adjacent properties.
Before we get into the public hearing, does anybody on the board have any questions? If any? I then call for the public hearing on SD twenty eighteen dash oh three. Anyone that comes forward will be sworn, and they'll have three minutes to present their case. Anyone in favor of this that wants to come and speak? Your name, not address?
My name is Dan Simmons. I'm with McGill Engineers. We're at two eleven Tyler Drive in Smithfield.
Thank you.
We did the, the engineering firm that did the design on the preliminary plat. I can tell you that we have exceeded the number of lots in the UDO. My understanding is when you go over thirty, you need two entrances, is a requirement of the UDO. We're at thirty-three. We talked with DOT. Where the curve is down at DOT will not give us a driveway permit to put a second drive into this property, because they say that would be too dangerous a location for a driveway, and moving further up is just too close to the driveway proposal. So, DOT basically is holding their hands and their feet to the fire to put just one drive in for this property. As far as the drainage, we will not be adding any additional drainings on the Benson Hardy Road. The lot is there today. All the drainings from the lots and the impervious area will be internal to the property. Now, there is some property there that drains on the Benson Hardy Road today, and it will drain on Benson Hardy Road in the through, but it won't be developed. It's where that power line goes, and we can't put a house or something under that. And I'll leave that. Answer any questions you might have.
Anyone else have questions?
Thank you.
Anybody else to come in favor? Anybody else to come in favor? Is anybody in coming that are opposed? Anybody opposed? We close the public hearing. Any discussion in the board? Any questions with the board? I'll entertain a motion to approve it as presented.
I make a motion to approve it as presented with the stipulations that we're presenting.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The rezoning of property located at three fifteen North Wall Street from B two, general business to B three highway business. Andy Thomas.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask to be accused from this as I represent the property.
Commissioner Johnson has asked to be recused from this, this particular subject. I'll entertain a motion to.
I make a motion that we're accused.
Any question? All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Johnson is accused.
Okay.
This is a request for rezoning from B two general business to B three highway business. We have a arrow five, the senior package, on the screen. The property is located at intersection three oh one and Martin Street. The owner is Blackman's Truck and Auto Sales. Location is three fifteen North Wall Street. The current zoning is B two general business. It is a zero point seven one acre lot. It has Johnston County utilities. The applicant is Blackman's Truck and Auto Sales. The surrounding zoning and uses. The property is bound by property zoned highway business. Property uses in the median area of our highway business. There is an existing mobile home park across the street. Staff comments and recommendations. I want the applicant desired to use this property in a manner as the surrounding property owners. Number two, presently, the property is spot zoned and would not allow automobile sales. Three, the request is consistent with the town of Benson land use plan, and that commercial development should be guided along the town's major thoroughfares. And before the staff recommends approval. At the planning board meeting last week, the planning board recommended approval of the rezoning request. Finding the request is not inconsistent with the plans and policies of the town of Benson.
Is any question of Andy from the board? Well, up to the public hearing, anybody that's in favor of this to come forward? Anybody that's in favor of this, come forward? Anybody that's opposed to this, come forward? While there's no speakers, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, four to zero. Under the old business, there was a note from the family to consider a request to rename North and South McKinley Street to, in memory of Dr. James Daniel Royster. A request was received from Kathy Royster Crismon in July of two thousand eighteen. The letter was sent to the property owners on August the twenty-eighth. The second letter sent to the property owners on September the twenty-fifth, and it was, the letters were certified. The answers that came by. Oh, here it is. I got it. And here's the letter that the clerk gave us after we got all the letters back. And on August twenty eighth, two thousand eighteen, a letter was sent by certified mail to five property owners on McKinley Street notifying them of the request, and requesting they submit any response in support or in opposition to the request. An additional letter was sent on September the twenty-fifth by certified mail and first-class mail to all five property owners. As of five o'clock today, there's been letters received from three of the affected property owners. Two were in favor of renaming the street. One was opposed, and two were non-responsive. And in this, this case, I'm going to allow the, the one that made the request, Kathy, if she wants to, to come forward and present her case, or let him come.
Yes, I'm Kathy Royster Crismon. My dad was a doctor here for probably over fifty years. He treated most of these people. It did not use credit to pay for your grandchildren and your children. I just think it would be nice to have an, have an honor like this for all the service he did for them. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions anymore?
Well, I have, you know, I've had some, I've thought about it, and I personally want to do everything I can to, to honor your acquit.
Thank you.
But I do no problem with the net. And so, I'm, I'm asking, is there anything to maybe to put this off, and you can maybe talk to that person, so you can work it out?
I've tried to talk to everybody on that property on McKinley.
So, is it still gay?
I, well, some people would not even come to the door. They were gay or no, but they wouldn't come to the door. And you went about, my husband and I about all the time. The lady I did, one lady I did talk to said she had just gotten her mail back delivered to McKinley, and it was too much trouble to change it. I said, I'm sure that the town would be glad to help you. It's no big deal to get your address changed. Other than that, I don't know. Everybody else I've talked to was a yes.
Thanks, Kathy. Let's see if there's anybody here that is opposed. Is anybody here that, that's opposed to the change? There being nobody, so I will entertain a motion from the, from the floor.
I just have a question. And I think this is one of the things we talked about the last time. Is it, and I can ask Kathy, is it something that, is it just McKinley Street that you're asking, or would it, would it be just as, would it mean just as much if we named some other street in the future after your dad? Yeah, right. Well, I was just asking that if we had somebody that was in opposition to it, at some, at some juncture in the future, I'm certain that we'll have a street that we will have today, and we can certainly, if that's, I'll just throw that out as food for thought. It doesn't matter to me one way or the other. I just, that may be one, one route around what you're concerned.
Well, let me ask you. So, you had no opposition, and the people that you went, you've gone to everybody, and some people didn't come to the door, some people didn't submit a, well, evidently, that if you don't speak up or speak for it, you either for it against it. But it's not, it's not one person on that street. How many people is up on that street? Well, five out of, four out of one out of five.
What's going to be the cost, anybody know out of pocket, for people to get stuff changed? Titles, the vehicles, driver license?
Well, is there any legal ramifications in doing this?
They're not going to have to change anything with the titles of the property. Their mailing is going to be the biggest issue.
The driver's license?
The driver's license. I can imagine that they may need to, they may want to go change titles to vehicles. I don't think there's any, you might have lost your car when you lived two houses back and ten years ago, and you still have that car you own. But you still have your car.
Right.
There's nothing need to be known as a real property. Titles are the real property you hear. You know, mortgage is not going to affect that if you, if you needed your home five years ago and infected something about McKinley. It's not going to need to be a change amended now. You don't need to go hire a lawyer to do anything in that regard. So, it would be an expense to them on that. It would be the time and hassle of changing documentation, your ID, and your mailing, and if you have, if you get mail, if your credit card has an address, and then, you know, there might be an issue there for a while, but I don't know if there'd be a legal cost.
Are we going to be legally, if we approved it, and the person said no, they have financial, you know, out-of-pocket situation, like, say, like their driver's license, it's going to cost them to, you know, to get a lot of driver's license changed. If they have a concealed handgun permit, it's going to cost them to get that changed. And there's some other stuff. Is there any way they're going to come back to town and say, y'all got to play for this?
The town has the legal authority to name the street, said it's a makeover, and you prescribed the process here, because my time is down at Grand Uncle Winnebago last time this came over. There's never going to be a street change. And I think what, the process you, you ended here is very similar to what I've seen other municipalities do, that those that put it out there for some public consumption prescribe the process. So, you're doing a lot like what another municipality would do, for instance, Raleigh. If you want to improve their process, you're doing this to what they do. If there's no opposition in their case, if they just generally recommend approving it and probably vote, they're going to call those to vote. If there is opposition, they go to a hearing, and then they vote on it. If they vote to approve it notwithstanding that opposition, then, then the street, name is changed, and there's no ramifications, and I'm aware legally that we're going to come back again to the town.
Terry, when you sent the letters out, did you notify them about the meeting tonight here?
Yes, sir.
That they would be brought up tonight?
You know, I've, in this situation, I'm trying to make everybody happy, which is I'm going to make all of them mad. But, you know, I thought about the new street thing like Mr. Johnson said. I thought that would be a great thing to do. If you have a new street, you just say that we're going to be, we're going to name it first, which I think is a great idea. The other thing, and I, I would hope that you could, guys could talk to this person and get them to say yes, because that would make it fine. If everybody was for it, that'd be great. But I thought about this. I saw that there's a north and a south. Any chance of naming the, the part of the street that they're not on, Royster Street, and then changing, maybe doing a two-part process and changing the other part out of the name?
Nobody on south.
So, we name it on the south. Name that Royster Street.
I'm just saying.
No, I, I went over there and wrote down, and there's.
It's only four blocks. I saw it on, I googled it. Four, two blocks north of the main, two blocks south of it.
So, there's no legal ramifications that the town would be.
The town has arrived at renaming the street, they controls or name a new one, same process, same, same rule. So, there's no ramifications of legal, illegal nature. Politically, I guess somebody could have an issue with it. I don't know what the particular one is getting brought up, but they could kind of make the claim the issue because they had to pay, to get it in.
I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
And I make a motion that we approve.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. So, votes five and zero. Everybody did vote. It is approved. Tim Robbins. Street resurfacing.
The unfortunate turn of events regarding our streets resurfacing package in July, I came to you requesting your approval to, to award our streets resurfacing for two thousand eighteen to asphalt services on demand. About a month and a half, two months later, this company contacted, contacted us and indicated that they wanted to rescind their bid that they could not. they wanted to rescind their bid that they could not, uh, perform the work for the amount that they did. Uh, so they, uh, they reasonably bid a hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars, uh, to perform work, identified in the primary bid as well as the alternate A and B. Um, with, with having received this, uh, this withdrawal of the bid, uh, we, they're suggesting that we move to the second, second lowest bid, which would be Johnson Brothers Utility. Um, their primary bid price was two thousand one dollars, eight hundred and, two thousand one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars, sixty-eight cents. Adding the two alternates in with us, uh, at two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-two cents. So, um, it's, it's unfortunate, uh, the gentleman indicated that he made an error, uh, mathematical error. I could, I could see where the error was, um, but unfortunately, the, the unit bid method that we requested, uh, he, he simply, there wasn't a, a bid qualifying that we could adjust it. Uh, so, uh, that being said, um, we're requesting, uh, your approval to move forward, uh, to the second lowest bid, Johnson Brothers. For two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-two cents.
Well, Tim, if we got a hundred and two thousand dollars from the pile bill, then there's gonna be, uh, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that is gonna come from fund balance, or we're not gonna do as much?
We through one, one eighty-five?
One, yeah, one eighty-seven.
Just, just to, really go ahead with what we just said. There's no legal way that we can do anything other than go to the next bidder or re-bid. We cannot allow them to change their bid. That's why this is the, the best solution under the circumstances. Unfortunately, that, that there's a law, that there is no opportunity to allow changes, and we can't do that, so.
So I, just theoretical question. Let's say that, uh, he said that, he said, I made a math error, and sorry, it's not one fifty-four or two sixty-four. And the other guy said, well, I ain't doing it for two thirty-one, then I'm doing it for two sixty-one. So we took a thirty thousand dollar loss for it.
You'd have to re-bid it.
But, so we, he has no, he has no, uh, legal, even if he hurts, there's no, there's no recourse he has.
You're talking about the, the, the original guy?
I'm just saying, I don't, I'm not after Asphalt Services, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, if, if they, if they did some. You know, I, this is my own, I live in my world and this world is different. If I tell you your glasses are a hundred dollars and I say, whoops, will you come back and say, whoops, I made a mistake, they're three hundred dollars? You know, that would work.
No, and it won't work for the town either. The town has not honored that contract. Matter of fact, the, the town can, can attempt to hold him to that contract, but the problem is that you get into a significant major concern about the quality of the work that you're gonna obtain. They're not gonna be able to actually fulfill it with, at the price that they quoted, which is admittedly on everyone's point, you know, it's, it's clearly erroneous.
My, my question is just to, to one, uh, one, uh, making this.
He can't, he can't make you, you know, now that he's got you to the cash register to keep on with the analogy, you're, he can't make you, uh, agree to this higher amount. Matter of fact, we could do the opposite and make him, but the concern is, again, he's not gonna be able to deliver on what we expect and that price.
Yeah, but there's, you know, there's no question, he, he's not gonna bid again, so we, uh, we need to, to, to go ahead and look at, uh, at Johnson Brothers and but, but the question is, is it gonna be a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars worth, or is it gonna be two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars?
Well, the primary bid, uh, for the, the initial lump of the project, uh, Johnson Brothers bid two hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars, sixty-eight cents. Um, I think we can reasonably pull out alternate A and B. I don't know if we can pare down the primary bid package.
So I'll, I'll reiterate the same thing. So I think you have a choice today of accepting the primary bid of two hundred and one thousand. Or what I encourage you to do is look at the page that we provided with you, the streets. So you have the street listing for primary bid, which shows thirteen roadways. And on page sixty-seven, it shows Western Street to seven hundred block down to East Home six hundred block. And this is the list that you all wanted us to bid, and then we talked about doing the North, North Street two hundred block and the North Dunn Street two hundred block. It's those two alternates that are pushing us up. So here's what I would advocate to you. You've received a hundred and two thousand dollars, which was anticipated in pile bill. You've already committed eighty-five thousand dollars of fund balance, which takes you to the one eighty-seven mark, one eighty-eight. We encourage you to consider the two thirty-one, pave the roads, and we'll take the balance out of the, the additional funds out of fund balance. Because what, if you recall, what we do each year is we budget conservatively and we try to save money, and we're carrying money forward. At this point, this is one of those rainy day situations where if you like the roads paved, you need to add a piece of it.
What do you say, Cam? Am I taking seventeen thousand dollars out of fund balance, or thirty-one thousand out of fund balance? But you don't see a problem with it?
So let me ask you, you, you are gonna include what, what part of Home Street?
Home Street?
The, the, all, all of, all of the Home Street sections are captured in the primary bid. Um, the alternate bid being, uh, relatively disconnected. North, North Street and North Dunn Street, so, um, it would, it would capture, um, everything we originally planned. Except for two to four hundred.
We can cut it out.
You wouldn't hear that.
So what are, what are we gonna vote on? Is it two thirty-one, or is it two oh one?
I make a motion that we, uh, accept the two thirty.
Aye, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Ayes have it.
Okay, Matt. Thank you, ma'am. You had talked, uh, at great length with us at the last meeting regarding our transportation improvement plan. We had allocated forty thousand dollars in our plan, and we had selected Raimy Kemp and Associates based on qualifications, not on price. We had our preliminary negotiation meeting with Raimy Kemp, and to do everything that we have in our scope of work was a quote of forty-five thousand dollars. What we can tell you is today, we've had a shift in personnel within the planning department, which is where this project exists. As you know, Mr. Newton left our employment and has gone to the county, and utilizing End Focus and our current team, we're gonna have a savings in that department. We all had met, and it included finance, our transportation team, our planning team. And we believe that the best solution is to take five thousand dollars of those savings out of the planning department and do the whole project at forty-five thousand, as opposed to reducing it by the five thousand to forty. So our recommendation first today is to do the full scope of work with the contract and the scope of services listed for forty-five thousand. And the second component that we wanted to bring to your attention is further research and further work needs to be done. And when we sat with Raimy Kemp, the scope of work stopped basically at I ninety-five. And we wanna point out to the board in very clear measure that east of ninety-five is extremely critical to the growth of Benson. Specifically, as we have an eighty-eighters site that's set to be certified east of, east of ninety-five, and a lot of growth there with the hotel and all the other improvements. There's an estimate cost of twelve thousand dollars to include that component of study into this comprehensive plan, which would take it from forty-five to fifty-seven thousand. We're also reaching out to our other area cooperatives, including the state, including our transportation group, to find out if there's anyone else that would like to partner with us to have that information east of ninety-five. There may be additional stakeholders, one or two, that would benefit from that data. We're in the process of trying to find out if they would participate. But even if they don't, our team believes, our entire staff in unison believes, that not only should we do the full scope at forty-five, that even if we can't get an additional grant or resources in a partnership to do this, the twelve thousand, that it's imperative that the town considers doing east of ninety-five in the full comprehensive study. And to boil that out, it would be to look at our overpass bridge, how we would connect an industrial parkway on the east side of ninety-five, and any additional residential progress.
Well, I've had a lot of discussions with DOT about this, so. And while ninety-five is, is really not involved per se in, in our study, we have a much better chance of getting in line to have work done that we wanna get done, like two forty-two, if we've got a transportation plan ourselves that shows there's a need for that in, in the future. And I think it's to our advantage to, you know, to have that done. But I, you know, the pricing, I don't know, but I, I, I would think we could get DOT to join up with us. I didn't. Have you asked them about this company?
Yes, sir. We're in the process of having those conversations. We've reached out to the RPO, and we've also, we're working through DOT. We have a meeting slated for Thursday at two at the weather.
What are you looking to get done here tonight?
Today, what we would ask is your first approval of allowing us to complete the forty-five thousand dollar project in the scope that it has. And then a contingency that if we can't find additional stakeholders, we can come back to you in the next thirty days and ask for the additional twelve. The last thing we wanna do is have to expedite any spending that is not necessary. But we believe that we can work on it. If we can't find some, and it's, I, I can't say that we're confident that we can. We have, you approved the forty-five today, and if we need the additional twelve, we would go through our budget, make sure we have it, and we would come back to you before any, any, any further decisions are made.
Any other comments?
I would like to point out one thing. I, I thank, uh, Mr. Blinson for coming tonight, and he and I, like he said, many of us have had very extensive conversations. And I've invited him to consider, ask the board to consider individuals such as himself to serve on this technical team. He brought up great points as we met. This gives us a chance to get stakeholder input, whether it be owners of the, uh, exit at three twenty-five, folks from Berry Classic to do up logistics on a daily basis, members from a hospitality, whether it be the Hampton Inn or the Days Inn, folks that are impacted by the smoothness or the interruption of transportation. We would love to have their input in the study. So that's another consideration that the board, they want to do is play business.
I think it'd be a good idea to get some, some outsiders. You know, the thing I look at is, when we did the parking state, you know, we thought we were in real trouble with parking. Until we did the study and we found out that it was only a place about as big as these tables here that we had a problem, that we didn't have enough parking. And I think we'll get some real advantage in doing, uh, a transportation study. Because of five forty and forty and I ninety-five and two forty-two and fifty and three oh one and the whole bit. Any other comments?
So we're done. We're considering now the forty-five.
Forty-five, yeah.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to approve forty-five thousand for a transportation study at this level. Any other discussion? All in favor, say, and, and with, with the understanding that you can come back with the twelve after we have a sit down. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Tim Robbins. Resolution one ninety-three to, uh, twenty eighteen Local Water Supply Plan Hall, I'm here with, I guess, I.
This is your question, resolution for, uh, the two thousand eighteen Local Water Supply Plan. This is simply a formality that's requested by Department of Environmental Quality, uh, every five years as regards the distribution systems. Basically, they, they take the data that we input, uh, to them, um, to help us determine if we have adequate water supply facility to, uh, to feed our current customers as well as future customers. As a matter of fact, uh, last year, we, uh, we revised our contract with, uh, with City of Dunn to increase our, our, um, the amount of water we could get from them based off of the findings of, of the twenty-seventeen, uh, data. We weren't in a critical position, but it said fifty years, they, they're, they projected that fifty years from now, under current rates, that we would start to run short of water. So, uh, what this asks us to do is just simply project out well into the future, um, that, that we have the resources in place. We have the, uh, we have the ability to purchase the most water to supply our customers. Um, that being said, the Q requires that you, uh, that you adopt the plan as it exists today. They, they ask that you do that every five years. So currently, we're, uh, our plan shows that we're in a good position, uh, all the way projected out fifty years out. As I said, this asks that you adopt the resolution.
So the, the report that you send then will be the packet that we have in there. It's a resolution and the, the backup data?
They've already got the data. They, they already have that data. They just, they asked that, uh, that every five years that we're, I guess, basically that I showed it, uh, to our elected board, that they understand the purpose of it, and whether we're in a good position or in a poor position, we're for it, and we're trying to work that out. And I guess the, the resolution gives them proof that we've destroyed.
That we know about. Does anybody have any questions with Tim? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ayes have it. Matt Smith. It was all right to take a little nap. You worked hard today.
The contracts and part of came through with, uh, to Mayor Medlin, and I got them, and before we can do any work, they have to be signed. And I was, I guess you guys have to prove that.
So Matt, that, would you like to receive three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars? No grant.
Aye. Have you looked at this contract from Parks and Rec? Any problem with it? All right, sit back down. I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no?
Thank you.
Ayes have it. Thank you, Matt. Kim?
I bring before you the August, um, financials. Um, at August, we should be at sixteen percent. Uh, our revenues were at fifteen point seventy, and our expenses were at twenty-one point thirty-six. Um, again, this is typical for the beginning of the year. We should start seeing, uh, more of our tax revenue coming in. We actually got more this, in September than we did in August, so it's gonna build up, and we'll see our revenues start jumping up here very soon, so. Any questions?
Kim? I know that, uh, the revenue really don't start coming until, you know, December, January.
November.
But in, in looking at the budgets, you know, the general fund is sixteen percent out where you would do. And there's a total of eleven accounts, and there's seven of them, or out four of them, okay. But in all the other departments, there's not a single one that's in their budget, except, uh, electric is, is pretty close.
You gotta remember, you gotta remember Fund Thirty, we're doing a lot of work that's gonna be reimbursed by FEMA's deal. coming out of that wastewater treatment plant. So until I can start getting them to send me money, yeah. And if it gets too bad, I'll put it all on a project and take it out of the normal budget. But last year, right towards the end of the year, if y'all remember, we got close to two hundred thousand dollars from FEMA. So I'm just kind of, that money's going to build. We have to spend it before they'll reimburse us. And I've sent in reimbursement requests and I've hit them up a couple of times and asked, you know, for updates on that. And I'll hit them up again tomorrow, but haven't heard back from her. And I'm assuming because they've gotten busy with this new storm that came through.
Well, I know you're on top of it, but finishing up last year and not knowing what the fund balance is, kind of, you wake up at night and you think about it. Sometimes it's hard to go back to sleep.
Yeah, I don't think we're in jeopardy of our fund balance. We, I talked to Jacob, he is the gentleman doing the audit this year, and he should have me some draft numbers hopefully by next week. We want to present it to the board August, October thirtieth. So draft numbers will be coming in soon. I don't anticipate any problems. So he's not addressed anything that he's concerned with yet. So, and he usually is, that group is usually pretty quick to ask questions if they, if they have some concerns and we're moving right along like we normally do.
Well, according to Matt, we like to get the reports to the state before the first of November.
Right.
Even though that's not a shooting in the head date, but.
Right.
We want to have an extra meeting just for presentation of the final budget statement on the thirtieth of October. Is that a killer for anybody? It'd be a short meeting, I hope, I mean, I think.
It usually is a fairly short meeting unless the board has questions.
I mean, is that a problem with anyone?
No.
I'll entertain a motion for any other questions that you have. I'll entertain a motion to approve the financials. Of course, any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Thank you.
Matt's out. Oh, Ike, Ike, I reckon you goes first.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Been up here a bunch. So this is one of the easements we're trying to secure to replace the water line behind Main Street on, this is a piece of property that's owned by Neighbors Holdings. That's through Neighbors Company. It's the old drugstore. Everybody familiar with mine, seeing where the property is I'm talking about. So there's an eight foot, it's about a ten foot alleyway back there, actually. Taking a long time to be able to get a surveyor to go in there and make the determination of where that property is. Still confident actually having a map now that's recorded with registered D that depicts that alleyway. And we're absolutely confident in the eight feet that we need being on the Neighbors Holdings property. So I think the last time this came up, which is Commissioner Holliday that instructed me to approve, needs to be done to secure the easement. This is the next one that's coming forward now. There's not a lot more I can say about the utility easement. You got it there, it's the standard utility easement for eight feet running length of the property. The thing to be considered, the reason why it's really important for you is how much compensation you want to approve for the property. In this case, there's a paved alleyway back there. It's not what we call it an alleyway. It's not an open public right-of-way or alleyway, but it's, I don't know another term for it. You've got one, tell me and I'll use it. But it's a paved area back there. And that's obviously going to have to be ripped up to replace the line after negotiations, which I know Tim's been a part of, has been a part of some of those maybe. Just trying to figure out a estimate as to what that's going to cost to replace. Mr. Neighbors asked for thirty-six hundred. The town staff has made about thirty-two hundred dollars to, for our paving crew to go in there and repave that. So the negotiation, negotiations have settled upon, consistent upon this agreement of it, a sum of thirty-two hundred dollars to just be paid to Mr. Neighbors and he's responsible for replacing of that pavement. It's going to be in our easement area, it'll be his responsibility. And then we have no further responsibility for the paving, or making a government like that. We have a permanent utility easement in our mind. The only stipulation that it's in the easement is just that it's only for the town. That was something Mr. Neighbors asked for, that Mr. Neighbors asked for, that we would disprove.
So this says that we have an easement in that alleyway and that if we have to go in and replace the water line, the tariff, the concrete, we'll put it back after the wash. Is that right?
You, you, it doesn't say that explicitly. I think apparently you would need to fix it back if you needed to go in there. I've left that just as an app, I can put that in there if you want.
I'm not telling you to do anything. Your turn.
I, William's fine with it. I'm good with the language. The biggest thing that brings to the forefront there is the compensation. So again, I've taken through the basic analysis or basic figuring here to how we've come up with this figure. It's just that's the estimate from the town staff and how much it would probably cost in the ballpark. Because us, the payment is requested a little more than that. But his is going to be, if you just pay me that, I'll figure it out.
Does anybody on the board have any questions?
So Commissioner, Neighbors is fine with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
And I'll make that motion that we approve it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Just to clarify.
Ayes have it.
Approve the, with the thirty-two hour.
Yes.
Matt's out.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a renewal of a lease, a ground lease, temporary ground lease with South River for a temporary substation. This is over at the town of Memphis, former dump site or now Yardway site. We have no issue from a staff level reissuing the five thousand dollars per year payment, recipients of five thousand dollar year payment from South River on it. We'd ask for your concurrence. Ultimately, what we do is use that five thousand dollars towards chipper and grinding of materials in that site. And it helps us to pray the cost, provide free materials, mulch, and grinding to weapons.
And we can get out of it in a short time if needed to.
For sure.
Any questions, Matt? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it. Last one.
Under item S, if you can go to page one thirty-nine, Tim Robbins and I met with our representatives from DOT in regard to the I ninety-five widening project. There's a substantial amount of work that will occur in our zone under ninety-five that is Benson related, water lines, sewer lines, any buried utilities, stormwater improvement. The request that we're making today to keep things simple, smooth, and inexpensive to our coffers is to utilize the same engineers that are coming through the entire project and we would engage them. This allows us to send a letter engaging, telling Division Six and Division Four who we'd like to utilize. So our request is to use Davis, Martin, Powell, and Associates. If we go outside of the scope of work, it takes us outside of the right-of-way. It's that point that we would incur costs. And Mr. Robbins and I would come to you if there was substantial cost that'd be outside of the right-of-way. What we anticipate, for example, there's a water line that runs down Parish Drive and that water line cuts across ninety-five. So any design that would be under ninety-five would be covered by the contract. But if we came back a block or two and said we had to use designer change, if there was a minimal cost for design, we would then pay that portion to the engineer. So it's less expensive than if we would utilize our standard contract if we used the wooden company. And we think it's, keeps it seamless in this particular project. So unless Tim sees or has any differences of opinion, we'd ask that you would approve us to move forward at this record.
Anybody have any questions, Matt?
I have a question. How old is that water line, something like that, just speed up?
I believe it's older than you and I combined. So at this point, we're definitely.
We probably need to replace that line before they go through, pay the block.
They are going to help us with that. So the replacement will occur during the construction. And so to take off what you're saying, I think you and I are thinking the exact same thing. So where did that line start? If you want to go back a block or two to that point that we haven't fixed it yet, now's the time for us to do that. And so what we're going to do is come forward to the board with any opportunities to approve Benson system. Things that occur under ninety-five will be a part of their project. Anything leads up to that will be us. But this is a great opportunity for us to make a fifty-year improvement for the community. And if we need to upsize or do anything, we contribute to that effect.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I already made a motion. I already made a motion.
Don't fight.
I'm not gonna fight, I'm just telling you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it. Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, sir. Under item G, we had anticipated tonight to bring forward presentations because we went out on a request for qualification for engineering firms. We were set to select engineering firms yesterday afternoon and bring you a recommendation today to do improvements down Main Street. Fortunately or unfortunately, the DOT has done an exceptional job of expediting their projects. They have a lot in the queue. Their twenty nineteen paving contract that was set and let to SC Wooton was to begin in twenty nineteen. That would have paved Main Street, carried out to East Benson towards Meta. But SC Wooton began early. And they've already paved the Meta schools all the way back towards rated Morgan Road. They're scheduled to come to town tomorrow. Even if you approved tonight, we would not have been able to finish all of our underground work on Wednesday, though Tim's good, he's not that great. And he said he would have needed more than eight hours. So unfortunately or fortunately, we have to adjust and adapt. So what we're going to do is drop back and audible. What we can consider is replacement of water lines in the alleyways either on either side of the street, which is best management practice, keeps them out of Main. And then if we have the funding to come through and rehabilitate manholes, that would be underground so we can mobilize and not disturb surfaces. The other component is repairing those sanitary sewer lines. And I've been part of projects before where they bring different technologies forward, where you have a bust-in-place option. You can go into a manhole at one street, enter a manhole at the other and bust that pipe as it travels down and you don't have to disturb the roadway. So we're going to have Plan B, unfortunately. The good news is they want to pave before Mule Day. The bad news is the hurricane's set to arrive Thursday. So although they are requesting DOT is anticipating coming in as early as Wednesday night and Thursday night, we don't believe with predicted rainfall that they're going to be able to accomplish that this week. Which means they'll have to come back and mobilize again for Sunday night if the weather permits. And this is night paving from seven PM to six AM. What our media team did is took the announcement from DOT yesterday. We pushed it, you all received it. Our Facebook, eighty-five, eighty-seven hundred people strong saw it. We also took a printed copy and our media team went door-to-door in the business district. What we need to stress very, very clearly is if there's a car parked on Main Street in a parking spot, after seven o'clock tomorrow night, that car's going to need to be moved. If they can't find the owner, we're going to have to move it for him or her, unfortunately. Because when that milling machine comes, they're not going to stop for anything. So they're going to mill and pave one half of the road on day one, mill and pave the other half of the road on day two. We apologize. There's nothing that the town could have done differently and it came at us rather swift. We literally were sitting down to open up those RFQs and the call came over. So here we are in a position that we're going to make lemonade on the lemons. We have a great relationship with Division Four. They've been very helpful, we've been very helpful to them. So that's the first order of business on the DOT chain. Any questions about Main Street, our process, or what we intend to do?
Just make sure we get the details up so people know where to go.
They got the seven issues out here at the home and main control now? Yeah, I seen both of y'all, it looked like y'all wanted to throw at each other. You're mad.
Yeah, you were watching it fall as the trucks went through. So we're also aware that any flowable fill in that vicinity is what caused us the sanitary issues the last go-around. We were doing what was fair and right, putting flowable fill in. But due to the lack of the tightness of the system, it found its way into the line. So we're cognizant of that, so that's the first issue. The other, if I can blend a lot of DOT process, it's here to do a lot of moving parts. Also due to the anticipated tropical storm, hurricane, which wanted to fall to heavy rain on Thursday, DOT has had to cancel our Thursday night meeting, which was the I ninety-five widening meeting, which eleven thousand, I believe eleven thousand postcards went out. Eighty-some hundred folks were tapped in Facebook. I don't know how many views we've had on that, how many shares. We're trying now to retract that to let people know that we will not be at Hampton Inn on Thursday evening from five to seven. We're trying to find an alternate date. Just for comedic value, to lighten the mood tonight, guess when they wanted to hold it?
I don't know.
There you have it. So she said the first opportunity is between the twenty-second and twenty-fifth. I said, well, ma'am, you can get a lot of feedback that week. There'd be a lot of people here. And so they said, well, we can go back to the week of the twenty-ninth. We said, we already have a board meeting on the thirtieth, anticipated for our audit presentation. You have Halloween on the thirty-first. She said, oh, we probably shouldn't do that. Said, well, the concert got pushed from the eleventh to the first. We'd rather not go there if we don't have to. And you don't want to hold a public meeting on the Friday night. If that moves you to the next week, that's election week. So you would have the elections on the sixth. So we said, well, we want to avoid Tuesday. Could we hold the meeting the sixth, or the seventh, which is Wednesday, or the eighth, which is Thursday? So our choices are the first, the eighth, or the seventh. This decision is not up to this board, it's up to the state. So they're finding out when they can bring their team in. We think that it may be one of those three days, we don't know when. We will make that notice made as quickly as we can to you as soon as we find out from DOT when they'll have the I ninety-five widening meeting. It could be, again, in tandem with the concert. And although this comment was made in jest, I think it's actually not a terrible idea that if they truly wanted feedback and get a lot of people, you'd have a lot of local people at Sundown and Downtown. So it depends how they want to gather that feedback. You prefer to be in an indoor setting if there was wind and you get a lot of paper blowing. We think it would be either the first, the seventh, or the eighth. And we don't even know yet if the Hampton Inn meeting space is available on those dates. So this was at five fifteen tonight, we were having those conversations. So want to let you know that as of today, the milling paving machines are coming through, but their chances are it's going to be pushed all the way out to Sunday. As of today, Thursday night's meeting is canceled. We do not have a firm date for reschedule.
Roundabout on November thirteenth.
We haven't got confirmation on that yet either. They're finding out if they can have that. Recall that was a tentative date that we sent you in a closed email. So we don't have confirmation on that yet. So we may have to look at holding a meeting on the thirteenth and it may be I ninety-five and then push it off roundabout. We don't know yet. We're working with two different departments within DOT on both of those conversations. There's a lot happening.
Okay. Town manager, report.
So obviously, item number one is on hold, it's been canceled, awaiting a rescheduled date. Item B down through, there's a series of events that we want to bring to your attention. This is still Public Power Week this week. We have recognized our staff and I want to applaud our social media team for doing the spotlight on our line personnel, which I thought were exceptional. With Fire Prevention Week, they're also doing awareness this week of fire, members of our fire department. So we just have a lot to be paying attention to and a lot to be thankful for for those first responders that are out helping us. We also know that the raffle for the South Johnson Optimist Club is coming. We also know that the raffle for the South Johnson Optimist Club is coming up on Friday. Then the prayer service in honor of the fire department, which was in tandem with Benson United Methodist Church, for the sake of the firefighters and to get greater attendance, would be on the 15th. Chief Johnson has reminded me that we failed to put on our, our calendar here that October 16th is supposed to be the parade for South Johnson's homecoming. Then you get to the 19th where we have movie night, Halloween on the 31st, Trump retreat as well. And because of the reallocation of mule days, it's moved our Run for the Brave 5K and our Healthy Harvest to be scheduled on top of or in tandem with our Veterans Day celebration. So those two are now paired together. Then we have Election Day, somewhere in that period we'll have the I-95 widening meeting. Then we'll be closed for Veterans Day. And then we're back here for our board meeting on 13th. And as the mayor indicated, if we get confirmation from DOT, that would be the night we have penciled in for our roundabout conversation, that may get shifted, but still hold that date. And then finally, if you can come up for air, y'all can go see your family and have some Thanksgiving turkey at the end of November. So the next six to seven weeks for us are simply full every moment. And we would ask for your grace, peace, and understanding if we, if we fail to do something or forget to send out an extra notice, please don't hesitate to call and remind us if you have any questions about the schedule. Our protocol will be to send you an email notice, an invite, a text message, and courtesy phone calls. We're gonna do everything we can because we know that these things are moving swiftly. Y'all have jobs and families, and it's our job to make sure you're caught off the speed. So if there's anything that we haven't done that you need us to do, or any additional communication that you'd like, please let us know. We're trying very hard to keep you in the loop.
October 15th, the prayer service is doing it at 7:00 o'clock. Now, all, all that starts at 7:00, the eating and then the prayer service after that, is that right?
That'll be at the fire station. And that, that's a little bit different than we did with the police because the firefighters come to their meeting, but they usually come late. They're all coming out of work usually, so that's why you're seeing it 7:00 o'clock start. And the board is invited, we would encourage you to attend. And then the other request that the mayor brought up was for us to look at, uh, the October 30th date for your audit meeting and the only thing that will hinder that is making sure the auditors will have the information available for you. And this is in honor of Will Chandler. In the event that we have a problem at mule day, we would be able to report that to you the Tuesday after. Now, we pray and knock on wood that that doesn't happen, but we always remember, held the meeting immediately following mule day, that if there was anything of severity or issue that needed to be addressed, you all would gather, uh, the week after. So it, uh, it plays itself well into the opportunity to present to the finances and hopefully everything with mule days went smooth and we had 70-degree temperatures and clear skies and, and no issues. You'd be able to cover those items as well. You will not have your full mule day debrief until the meeting in November when we calculate hours, costs, uh, amounts of expenditures, things of that nature. For the newer members to the team, what we have done in the past is you do a full recap. Every dollar that went out from mule days, every dollar that came in, and usually there's a net loss, plus or minus around $30,000. And we would be, uh, every department tracks hours, manpower, and wages and we share that with you after, at the first full meeting in November.
Kim, in your discussion with the auditors, uh, you think there's gonna be a problem with the 30th? You think they'll be ready?
I, I think they'll be ready. But I wouldn't. Why does that ask you that?
Any other thing, Matt?
Uh, no, sir, any questions, anything that we need to do. I do have one report that came from Commissioner Neighbors. He asked, uh, for us, he apologized for not being here today. And he said he wanted to thank everyone that participated in Hurricane Florence for their dedication and their commitment. He addressed specifically in a text message, the frontliners, the electric department, keeping the light going. So his apologies are shared.
Aye. And Commissioner?
I've got a question, um, Johnson, brother failing, when would the failing begin, do you reckon?
So Commissioner, keep in mind, we would have work on Parish Drive.
Yeah, I was wondering when it was gonna be.
And hopefully we can get ahold of Mr. Blackman and, and get his easement and get his design rolling. There're just gonna be a lot of dust and debris for a period of time. And we're gonna use the weather to our advantage, uh, as best as we can and try to beat some of the winter.
Anything else?
And I'd like to say thank you to all the town staff for everything dealing with the hurricane. Uh, any overtime work, I know I had to work about 50 hours overtime in about five days, so I know what your pain is, 'cause I was tired. But I, I, I appreciate it, and in fact, to your families, I appreciate it, 'cause they had to make sacrifices.
I would, you know, uh, I, we sent a text yesterday, I think, but, um, I was, I have a, a drug rep. Her husband was on the, he's either mayor or fable or on the town, Board of Commissioners, or he's running for senate right now. And, uh, we were talking about this general stuff, town, uh, he said they have an app called Fade Fix and it's a way that people can say, can communicate better with the town. There might be a tool that we could use to, one more way of communicating with citizens. And it's not something I'm advocating, I'm just saying, I think they'd look into it and see if it's got you back.
And it's called what?
Fade Fix.
So to build off of Commissioner Rayner, we had a beta protocol, a beta test of an app that we're working on. A lot of folks refer to those as the C-click Fix App, that if you see a pothole or if you see a trip hazard on sidewalk, when you take a picture, it can GPS locate it. When you see it, you click it, you put it in the app, it would send an email over or send a, uh, digital picture to whomever and then we, it, it funnels it. So it would go to Public Works, Work Board of Processing, and Raleigh has been doing that for some time as well. Both cities are finding high value, high value. But I will tell you that we will need to be prepared. Once we launch that, it's great and then we'll be out there, it, it's positive, absolutely positive. We're trying to get that handled. So our media team has had, uh, a lot of work in that area and we'll, we'll try to bring something forward as quickly as we can if there's an option for financials.
Anything else?
I, I too would like to take this time to thank our electrical department because I'm gonna tell you, I have some friends that were, were out of light for five days. I lost light, I mean, they flick it on and off, but I think I lost about a half. So we were really, I would like to say thank you to the town for all the hard work and especially thanks to the electrical department.
The, uh, the committee that has been handling the committee performance, taking the, uh, applications and putting them in and bringing them to the commissioners. Uh, we're overdue in, in doing this, when can y'all, let's get together? Did you give everybody a copy of this?
Yeah, we, I gotta eat now.
So we need to find out the way and to, um, talk, come to William and see if, if we can get this time. And we'll group the rest there. 'Cause there's, there's some holes in this and Terry and I were talking about. And we got some pledges that we don't have, that people. We'll advertise again.
And these are basically the applications that were left over from the first one. There's no, no, none of them.
No, there are D ones.
Those aren't, I, okay.
There are some that were still on file, but, as well as D's applications. I couldn't give you a exact number, which is a little question.
That's all I hear. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session. MCGS 143-318-11A3, consult with Attorney Floyd and retained by the further body.
Can I make a motion to go into closed session without five minutes?
You wanna take a five there? You gotta break. Got a motion, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, no.